This conference will now be recorded.
Now it's three o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, please. Everyone rise. Aye. Okay, great. It's nice to see everyone today. If you are here physically in the room, if you would just make sure your phones are on silent. If you are attending via the go-to meeting, just make sure your line is muted until you are asked to speak. We do need a motion for special, for a bill to attend through special circumstances.
I so moved.
Second.
We'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion.
Thank you.
Flavi also online?
I don't believe so.
Doug, I can barely hear you.
Okay, is that better?
It is better, thank you.
I'll just pull the mic a little closer. Okay, starting off, public comments.
Okay, we have three regarding agenda items and one non-agenda. First is Kathy Flaherty regarding agenda item four F. Mind your five minutes. No, you stand there. Ron, you stand there.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Kathy Flaherty. I'm from Stony Brook. And the four F, the four F one is agenda where they want to take out the cocoa plum and the exora and put in shells. First of all, we are not a beach community and it's, that's just, you know, we're not, we're, we have, we're a little bit different than a beach community. We had to fight last, a few years ago for the royal palms that were relocated. So I'm thinking that that is important to us is to keep that area elegant, pristine. You're putting the shells up at this, at the north end, but you're not putting them up at the south end because you'd get more complaints there. Also, at the roundabout, there you, you're complaining that it's for the safety. At the roundabout, that's at, that's near, that's already set up. There are narrow places where there's just grass. It's narrower than the median at the Stony Brook. Why don't you put shells there? Across from Gateway Greens, there's an area just right across that's narrower than this median is at Stony Brook's. You're going to put shells there, okay? Second of all, I mean, there was no notice that no one came to Stony Brook and asked Stony Brook what they would like. It's just, you just did it and nothing was said beforehand. It's not very transparent. It really isn't. And I mean, I think you should have come to Stony Brook. I mean, look at the school where there's the shells now. They're terrible looking. I think they, there's weeds growing, so you still have maintenance, but you're not taking care of them. The shells will be more dangerous because they go into the street. So, and you still have to take care of those things too. There has to be some alternative. I'm sure, you know, even artificial grass would be an alternative, but I'm just making that suggestion. There's got to be. You know, when you have a vendor here, you like three different vendors to come in with different bids. So if you're going to change something, you should have three different alternatives to that so that they can be chosen and looked at. And it should be put out. Something like this should be put out to Stony Brook community. You know, the oak trees, they caused problems, but you kept them. They caught, that was a safety issue. People walking on the sidewalks, cars driving because the roots destroy. As I said, there's going to be weeds and I think, you know, there should have been some kind of notice to be, to Stony Brook to be told about this. And because they're unattractive. They're offensive. Thank you.
Question. Question. Kathleen, what the hell are you talking about? I have no idea of what you are talking about.
Let me just speak to it really quick.
Because I'm not seeing anything of what you're talking about.
There's an agenda item and there's not, there hasn't been a whole lot of discovery. I've asked Laura, when it gets to it, we're going to table this item because it needs more discovery and more conversation. So I was going to say something before you spoke, but. So just know there's, there will be more to come on that particular item. We're going to, we're going to table it for today.
I did read it, Ed, but I wasn't.
I was not of, I had no idea that was the scope or the intended scope.
Yeah.
No way.
And it's only cost thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars to do it.
Only?
Only. That's what I said, only. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So that's four after we're.
Margaret Feinberg had the same item, agenda item.
Good afternoon. Margaret Feinberg, Stony Brook at Gateway, representing myself. And I'm just going to be shorter and sweeter, but I have to agree with Kathy. If you look at the roundabout down in front of the high school, it's got the shell in it and the weeds growing out of that are, it looks terrible. It hasn't been maintained at all. And putting shells in the median down there at the Stony Brook entrance and taking out, you're literally taking out all the shrubbery. And I don't even understand if you're looking at low maintenance, there's nothing more low maintenance than the dwarf exora. They require almost nothing except for fertilization. They don't require trimming because it's the nature of them being dwarf. I have them in my yard and I, I don't know why you would take the only color that's down in those medians and rip it out.
So you're talking about the median?
Yes.
From starting at the point of where the middle median is and going north all the way to eighty-two?
Yes.
Of going in there and putting stone or cocina?
No, the shells.
They want to do the shells.
The white shells.
Cocina, yes. Put that in.
But taking out all the shrubbery. The only thing that would be left is the palm trees, no grass.
Straight stone.
Stone, yes. And, and I, I'm flabbergasted. I can't imagine anybody thinking that that would be a good idea.
I'd rather paint it green and call it grass.
I know at one time there was a discussion about maybe putting artificial grass in there, but leaving the shrubbery. And that would be preferable to just stone. Anyway, that's my comment.
End up in the road.
So more, more to come on that. Did you say we have a couple more?
Yeah, two more. I always murders Bill Cirico?
Cirico.
Cirico, yep. Regarding items four A and four B.
Thank you. Five minutes, right?
Five minutes to start it.
At the last border supervisor meeting, you asked us to go back and see if we could continue negotiating between the Pelican Preserve Committee Association and Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. Good news and bad news. So Meezy, the chairman of the P-PAC and Bob Geppert, one of the supervisors that I met. We did work out a framework for a settlement between us all that we were all equally dissatisfied with. So I guess it was a good negotiation. We brought that to the P-PAC at their last meeting. It's some spirited discussion. I think we walked out of the room believing we had a handshake. Everybody was pretty happy. Even Mr. Schofield came and said to Phil and I that he thought we could make this work. He understood what we were trying to do. Later that evening, Mr. Schofield resigned as chairman of the LWG and resigned from his position on the advisory committee. So what we have right now is a framework, but until the advisory committee appoints a new member and a new chairperson for the LWG, we don't have the personnel to execute it. We do have some Ts to cross and Is to dot to satisfy Mr. Geppert's questions. I think we also have an outstanding question for district council that hasn't been yet resolved that Mr. Geppert was going to ask for us. But after that meeting, we leave and it was, Mr. Geppert stated intention to come to the border supervisors today and ask for a further extension to table the resolution from the communities, from the advisory committee. I think this whole experience has taught us a couple of lessons. One, of course, is one we've been trying to make unsuccessfully in that when you place these kinds of governmental services in the hands of volunteer committees, we're always going to have this kind of potential for volatility, regardless of the fact that it has been singularly successful in other cases. The other thing that came to light was, one of the impediments for us to come to a conclusion was that the Sunshine Laws made it impossible for Mr. Meezy to speak with Mr. Schofield. So we had a breakdown in communication, if you will. It was impossible for us to get all the players that had a stake in this to talk to each other. Which also brings up the question of whether or not, when you take an advisory committee like P-PAC, there is an effective way for them to oversee and hold accountable working groups that they can't talk to. It's kind of difficult for us to understand how this works under those circumstances. However, we are committed to the framework we agreed to. We will work, continue to work together to try to make it work. And in the interim, the O and M agreement is still in full force and effect and we will carry out our obligations to the district and safeguard its facilities within Pelican Preserve. Thanks for listening.
Okay, we have one more. Rod Senior has a non-agenda miscellaneous.
I want to welcome Chelsea to the district. I want to acknowledge Premier District Management, who were the people who first interviewed you and hired you from advertisements and screening. They were the ones who also hired your predecessor, Chris Shoemaker. I know they're not here to get that acknowledgement, but I wanted to register it. There is lessons learned. We made efforts to conduct in-house recruit. Didn't work. It became convoluted and too protracted. And the lesson is that for future situations like this, please let's farm this out to professional third parties. The next item, of course, when it comes to staff, the way it would be a public works manager. And public works manager with some surface water experience, I think is important. Litorals. That brings me on to litorals. Just want to thank whoever's responsible for clearing up the litorals on Lake 116 that I look at every day on the golf course side. Knowing Al Harris, she hasn't voluntarily cut those litorals back. It's come from someone else and thank you for that. I am in favor, as I was when I was on this board in 2016, Bob Geppert, several others, Ed, and others all got together with seven trends. We put upon standard together, essentially adhering to Leek County Code 10-418, which requires twenty-five percent of litoral on linear shoreline, which is great, hopefully on non-residential shoreline. Ed, Bob, you and I went around your community when we first got on the board with John Greer. We looked at all your ponds. You've done a great job. You put eight-foot stakes in. And I remember that. I thought that was a good idea. I don't see the stakes in our lake.
They're not in ours anymore either.
Well, for whatever reasons, I thought that was good discipline for the contractors, whether it's eight-foot or twelve-foot. I think stakes work. It didn't work opposite my house for a long time and they got really bad. When it comes to pond bank restoration, major project, got ourselves into huge debt on state revolving fund loans. It's pond bank stabilization, let's all agree that we're not under immediate threat from South Border Water Management. So that we're all putting in huge amounts of stone and alumina. I don't know what the linear footage cost is, probably a hundred and twenty-five bucks. It was ninety miles. There are other methods to stabilize Heritage Farms, Ed, that we went to use as geo-filter tubes, GFT. I talked to Carl Teagle, manages that. Anken Marine is a contractor that's done a really good job with that. Thirty-eight dollars a foot. Carl Teagle's invited Chelsea and any others to go and visit Heritage Farms if you're interested to see it. And Andy at the Hyacinth District declares Heritage Farms to be the best lakes in the area. FGCU has created a water school. I think it would be a good idea to build a bridge and collaborate. The budget, we started out at a hundred and three percent a year ago, dragged it down to ten point two percent by some nifty shifting of operating to capital. It's not okay, in my opinion, to be double-digit. We've got huge inflation, six dollars a gallon of gas coming up. I think we should be mindful of that and keep our budget down to CPI of two percent. Last point, roundabouts. It's costing us point eight million dollars at Commerce Lakes and potentially one point three million dollars at Griffin. That's enormous. I want, I would like the board to address Tony at some point. Tony and Pete Dora, Ed Sichel, Ed Timpel, were all involved in these negotiations. I don't believe it was the intention of any of the parties, including John Fedema at the county, that we would give them a blank check like this. And, you know, in clause sixteen of the Hold Harmless Agreement, which is what this boils down to, it talks about road widening. Yes. We want, we were, we were envisioning road widening at the top of Lake Gateway Boulevard at Stony Brook. We knew that was going to happen. Ten years down the road, that's why we shifted the Royal Palms, because we knew we got ten years and they were going to get widened. But I don't think it was contemplated that they were going to be building roundabouts to this extent and cause us this kind of expenditure of two point one million. Who knows what they're going to build on, build next? I mean, are we just going to continue to be burdened like this as a result of our agreement? So therefore, can I ask the board to have a discussion with Tony and ask him about what's important in these contractual relationships, was it intent, which is intent, and reasonableness?
And you're close to time.
Yeah, I realize that. This is a big deal. We're into two point one million dollars on the roundabouts. Please ask Tony about intent and reasonableness and look at the last clause in the harmless agreement, which is mediation. Because there may be something we can do on this. They've thrown a, they've thrown a fountain.
Rod, you, I think we understand what you're trying to say. We just need to wrap up because we're trying to hold everyone accountable for their time, but thank you.
Okay, that's why they've been generously giving us a fountain, because I think they realize the burden.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rod.
We did not receive anything by mail or fax and no one online has asked to speak.
And just want to let the record show, I do see that Flavia is on.
Oh, there she is.
And so we will need just, again, a vote to allow Flavia to join through special circumstances.
I make the motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving along. No additional comments. We will move into our, our staff reports. We will start with district council.
Not here.
Apologize, Mr. Guy. Just working on a number of projects.
Much better, thank you.
I need to wrap up probably in the next two weeks. One is on the Palazzo roadway turnover. Finish the title work on that so we can get that deed turned over. The stack of covenants I need to go through.
Is this the document that Charles Mann has to sign?
No, this is, this is different. This is the Palazzo condominium association. Giving us, sorry. But that leads into the next issue, item with regards to what consent we may need from WCI or Lennar with regards to the development order application for that portion of the Pelican Preserve ingress egress emergency road. So I sent an email to Charles and I haven't heard back, but I'll keep bugging Charles about it.
Rick says that he cannot submit to the county the necessary permit until he has Charles's signature on the piece of paper.
Yeah.
And it's holding up everything.
I'll, I'll nudge Charles again. Also, I'll look at whether or not we have the ingress egress easement, whether that would be enough to get the deal from the county. I'll work with Rick on that.
I just was talking to Rick about something else and asking where we at because I've been talking to Phil and we haven't heard anything for some time. And he said, I'm tied up. I've got the, the gates all taken care of now, but I've got to go to the county with a permit. The county won't accept it until they have Charles Mann's signature on the paper.
I'll follow up with Charles. I don't know if Russell Smith, probably be the one to sign or Charles or Russell, somebody to authorize it.
Yeah, somebody's got to sign off.
Yep.
Because it's in their name.
That's correct. Again, unless, I'll double check the ingress egress easement. If there is, the utility easement, if that would give enough authority, if that would give enough comfort level to the county in the interim.
Don't know.
To do that.
I'm just going by what Rick said.
And on that too, kind of get with trials on wrapping up the FPL easement conveyance, which is a separate conveyance, but it's all WCI and R on that also. Working with staff on a number of different items and may come up as we get down the, on the path here. There might be some additional items to comment on.
Please talk into your microphone.
It might be additional items, Mr. Guy, as we get into the various issues with regards to the other items on the agenda, but that's what I have to report right now.
Go ahead.
Relative to the Pelican Preserve crossover road also, as I understand it from Rick, we've got an issue on the electrical. Is somebody talking to Bentley or how are we, his question was, how do we get this done? Do we have to bid it or can we just simply have Bentley give us a price to run the electrical for the gates, the operator?
Oh, you're talking about the emergency, the emergen, the access road?
Yes.
I reached, I may have been Bill work with Bentley. There's been, FPL disconnected the meter there. Bill is intimately familiar with the wiring, as is Bentley. I feel it's best for Bill and Bentley to work together. I don't think.
Rick's question was, is do we have to go out for bid or can he be dealing with Bentley?
It won't be that much. It'll be under what we would need to do for bid. So I'm going to have, I'm going to have Bill get a quote from Bentley and then I'll make sure that Rick gets that.
Okay, and then relative to the road, just so they're trying to get ahead of the game here of what's going to happen and screw this thing up for another six months. Do we have to bid this work or can we take this work and go out and get a contractor to do the work?
I would assume it's going to be high enough that we're going to have to bid.
What, what are we talking about? The total project?
You're talking the paving?
Well, no. What, what we've got is we've got a whole bunch of different trades, like the fencing, the gate arms.
The controllers, the wiring.
The paving, any one of those, which I, I don't know, what is our limit on bidding?
Well, for construction activity now, when you apply the engineer record, wherever that, I'll find that stat. I think it's up to almost four sixty, four seventy now.
Well, then, we're none of, hell, I hope the whole project doesn't cost that. So I.
If we have to, if, yeah, if it's from the standpoint of having to solicit proposals as a construction activity.
If you have to go to solicit proposals, then we've got to have specifications and all that stuff. Just going to add to the cost. If we can go out and negotiate with some contractor to do the paving and/or do the fence or do the landscaping or, I mean, there's.
Just manage as individual.
We have that now.
Components on that project.
We have that now. Well, I mean, that's, that's the way we've been handling it so far. We don't have any proposals for, to do the paving yet on the road. We, they, what Rick had in there from, I think it was Carter was the fence.
Carter just came through with the pricing, twenty-three thousand for the gate arm.
Yep, and that was for the fence, the gate arms, the controllers, and then they have the specs for the electricity. Bentley can take care of the electrical work side of it. We have the paving, which would be a separate company that does paving. And then we have the landscaping, which would be a separate.
Yeah, we could have somebody, whether it's staff or staff and Rick, authorized to get with all the trades and simply get a price to do this work.
If you're comfortable with it, Rick is who we asked to be to corral this whole thing. I'm fine. I mean, just the Bentley piece, I just asked Bill to work with Bentley because they work together and Bill knows what's going on out there. So the rest of the pieces, I'm fine. If the board.
I just don't want to lose any more time on this. This has taken.
I guess the question is, do we have a total estimated project cost for the roadway construction?
Not yet, no.
Okay, I mean, under chapter two fifty-five twenty, if it's more than three hundred thousand dollars as adjusted by another statute, you don't have to competitively solicit it. And the statute is, you adjust it by the percentage, you don't love this, Ed, percentage change in the engineering news records building cost index from January one, two thousand nine to January one of the year in which the project is scheduled to begin. Now, translating that, my, and talking to some other recent projects with other districts, it's, that number's around four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Well, as I recall, the estimate that I had done originally to start of this whole mess was in that ballpark and I was told.
Yeah, that's what I recall.
And I was of the understanding that I might have been the high bidder at that time, which means it would be even less. So let's get this thing done.
I'm on day four. Please give us, give me a chance to get caught up to speed with this project.
We'll talk tomorrow.
We'll talk tomorrow on this. We'll make sure it's moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, but I like the idea of let's get it rolling, not bogged down in our typical process that adds six or nine months or so.
Agreed.
Okay. But Chelsea, I think you can work with that four sixty number. We'll double check that.
Yes. Okay, we should be safe.
Um, so anything else for Tony? Okay, we will move to engineering.
Good afternoon. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I've got two updates on Lake Banks. At the last meeting, I informed the board that we were going to move on from Lake Fifty-Eight and move to Lake One Seventeen and Lake Seventy-Nine as they were, you know, more manageable sized lakes as the rains are starting to approach as a frequent event now in the afternoons. This week, on Monday, the contractor, Matt Towers, sent an email to us requesting relief on the, the times so they could push this back until probably November or at the, at the earliest time when the afternoon rains come to an end so they can get a chance to pump down the lakes. Initially, they thought they'd be able to do it, but the forecast is just kind of unpredictable right now and it looks like next week is officially going to be the start of rainy season. So, you know, I'm in agreeance with them. I think staff is too. The problem is with the afternoon rains, any material they put down, it, it just gets washed away right after they put it down. So it'll be a sloppy mess and it'll be a pretty big battle for them to keep the ponds pumped down while it's raining.
Stephen, what number are we referring?
Seventy-nine, one seventeen.
Yeah, so essentially all of the lakes, but specifically, they were planning to start Lakes One Seventeen and Gateway Greens and Lake Seventy-Nine in Daniel's Preserve this week. And we're going to push the project back until November. We've talked about pre-purchasing the material now so that we can avoid any price hikes because the products are petroleum-based. And the manufacturer has notified everyone like, hey, there are going to be some price hikes coming. There's a lot of shortages. So the plan is to issue an NTP for procurement and allow them to bill for materials, get the materials on hand so we don't have an issue with shortages or price hikes down the road. And we'll be ready to go in November.
And I confirmed with SRF that we can do that and still apply to have the funds reimbursed.
And then where we, I know we've purchased materials in advance before. Where are we storing this?
Matt Tower has a closed barn where they're going to keep the materials. So it'll be, it'll be all under shelter till we need it.
Okay, so we will purchase, Matt Tower will house.
No, Matt Tower is purchasing and housing.
Okay.
So this is the email that I sent you guys earlier in the week. We have a meeting with Matt Tower tomorrow. Received the email from Stephen today that we're all in agreement, but we'll meet with them tomorrow, issue the procurement NTP, set a timeline moving forward for construction, come closer time to construction, of course, we'll give you a prize of that progress with that project. Later down the road, we'll issue an NTP for construction, hopefully once the rainy season subsides, but expect that to be probably in the fall timeframe.
Okay.
In the meantime, Tetra Tech is sending out their staff to inspect the ponds that were as part of this phase. And core staff, we keep an eye on them regularly as well.
So how will this, how will this impact the next phase of lakes? Because it will push everything back. So we are coming on budget. Will this basically put us almost another season behind?
Do we lose a year?
Well, not only do we lose a year, but do we gain budget? That's kind of more what I was.
No, it's because you haven't spent it because it's on the.
But, but I mean, as far as like.
Hey Doug, to answer your question, so we're, right now I'm working with L and Chelsea's helping us as well to reprioritize the remaining lakes in Gateway to identify all of the ones that do actually need to be repaired. The plan is to shortly get you guys a list of lakes and an estimated cost and all of that information for the board to make a decision and provide direction on how to break up the remaining lakes and, you know, what possible funding sources we can go after. If we go after SRF, it's probably a year turnaround from, you know, start to construction. I don't know if it'd be any shorter with bonds. But with SRF funding, we have to write a facilities plan for all the lakes that you intend to repair, get that approved at their scheduled meetings. And then after that, we can go through design, get that approved at one of their scheduled meetings, and then we can release it for bid and construction. So.
If we have to go through that process, is SRF telling us that we have a general limit of dollars that the total of the next round of ponds should not cost over? Have we got a?
No, it, it's different every year. For instance, a year and a half ago, SRF didn't have any money, so they weren't releasing any projects. So it's, it really just. So it's, um, it really just depends, you know, sometimes they're flush with cash and it's, uh, it's easy to get things approved. It, it really just depends on cycle to cycle.
Well, our biggest problem would be is, uh, you know, I guess it'll be, it'll solve itself because the fact, fact we lost a year. So the year that we're gonna be moving back the construction will be the year we're doing the design and facility planning for the other project that'll come up the year after that.
With the next one.
So, so yeah, the next one in the hopper. So at best, we're looking at probably twenty four to be able to do the next round of project, ponds, is that correct?
So we could, we'll, we'll finish this construction phase in probably twenty three, like the, the winter of twenty three. And you could have, um, like if we were to get going like right now and submit the facilities plan this November, by next May, we could be out of the SRF program and get the project on the street to bid for the upcoming fall, which would be the twenty three, twenty four fall or winter.
You get the, uh, reranking of the, what have we got, twenty seven ponds left to go ballpark?
So L sent a, so in two thousand seventeen, we had ranked like the worst of the worst ponds or what we thought they were the worst, the worst ponds at the time. You know, in five years, a lot has changed. L will use that list and update it, but there's other lakes in Gateway that need to be added to that, to that list. So we're gonna be looking that, looking at those over the next couple of weeks and bring that to the board.
I mean, well, I'm trying to get this thing because it, it doesn't make any difference what it costs. The issue that we've always had has been getting vendors that can do the work. Well, that's been the limiting factor and it's usually been around five to seven ponds depending on the size.
Yeah.
If that's the case, we're looking at three to five years to finish out this entire thing. The natives are not happy about this at all.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of factors at play. One, I, I think our challenge has always been the amount of ponds that we can do it at one particular time, which is that just spoke to that.
Vendor related.
And we've already started down this path, so we need to be marching towards completion. However, I do think this might put us in a position where with costs skyrocketing right now, you know, a year kind of gap might give us an opportunity to maybe see how, you know, costs, I don't imagine.
Or it gets worse.
Well, right, you're, you're taking a little bit of gamble, but I would also like for us to do a couple of things if we are saying, we're gonna, let's, we're gonna lose a year because they're pushing these back, you know, that's directionally correct. I would like for us to go and look at doing a reassessment. Let's go and evaluate all the ponds again, confirm our priority level. Two, continue to look at, you know, options. Um, I think you're gonna see some material costs go up, maybe there's gonna be other, other solutions that, you know, may not spike as high, that might be just as viable for, you know, for, for cost options. And then, and then three, it might give us a little bit of time to see what the, you know, what the market materials are gonna do. I, I don't think we're gonna see a drastic change in, in twelve months. It's probably gonna take us a couple of years to even start to get back flat, but we don't know.
Well, the key is to get this reevaluation of the priorities. Get that so that we can authorize Tetra Tech to prepare the facility plan on those.
Let me, let me touch on that. So you guys are relying on SRF funds.
Oh, yes.
Okay, their plan is to put together, work with, Tetra Tech working with L with staff, coming back to you guys with the reprioritization of the list, understanding from past experiences, we're kind of stuck within a certain five to six ponds depending on size, putting a game plan moving forward. If we do pursue the funding source of SRF, we know that there's X, Y, Z requirements, timing restrictions. If we choose an alternative funding source, which we did put money in the bond validation process, we can look at other funding sources, understanding, yes, the interest rate is, is the deciding factor and as we all know, what, what's going on right now. But give us some time to put together this list, get some hard data, get it on paper and we'll come back to you.
Well, can we get, I understand all that, but can we get the list, the priority list at the next meeting such that we can then authorize you to go and do whatever it, well, one thing you gotta do, whether you do SRF or not, is the facility plan. You've gotta do the preliminary report. You just call it a facility plan because SRF has requirements for it. But we need to get that report done on those top priority projects and all that other stuff falls by the wayside. So we need to establish that list quickly to be able to tell Tetra Tech, proceed with ponds X, Y, and Z. We need to do that quickly.
Yep.
Because we'll never make it to October and have an approved facility plan to be able to get.
We'll make it a point to get it to your next meeting.
We can't sit here and wait to get done what's already in the hopper without having the next project ready to go.
Trying.
That's, that's.
Otherwise you're losing it.
That's exactly right, that's the thing that I want to make sure we guard against. We'll put what we have to do this year deferred to November or not, it's still, that's history. We need to be forward if it was what's next.
Yeah.
And to get that priority just is exactly.
And my point was not to slow down our efforts. It was, let's leverage this time. So again, make sure we're evaluating, make sure we're looking at material costs and design.
The key is to have a shovel ready project, so when the funding does become available, we can jump on it.
We know what we want, right?
Yeah.
And, and then the other part of that, we brought it, brought it up before and it's had a interesting discussion, but I'll bring it up one more time. The golf course escarpments are getting severe and we're having cave-ins on the golf course.
What?
Cave-ins.
Cave-ins?
Yeah, cave-ins.
I didn't hear the word.
Yeah, what, major washouts, major washouts.
New, new sand bunkers is what you're calling them.
Well, what, what I call them is cart traps. You go down and the next thing you know, you're gonna have your cart in the lake. No, we're having severe drop offs and it's, the escarpments have just gotten too big. I mean, we're looking at a foot to two feet escarpments all along the golf course. That's, that's not allowable to South Florida. We've got to address this issue. So when they're looking and evaluating these ponds, we need to evaluate the ponds we've already done that we skipped the.
It should be a total evaluation, I mean, that's, that's what you need to do, okay. Stephen, what else do you have?
Uh, those are the items that I'm bringing forward today unless you guys have any other questions for me.
I just wanted to let the board know, again, with Chelsea coming in, there's, there's some routines that are changing, you know, we're looking at operational efficiencies, all that kind of good stuff. There is a routine that we have modified, which is the staff and engineering. So you guys are meeting on Thursday now, now what day or?
Tuesdays.
Tuesday, Tuesday at ten o'clock?
Yeah.
So I would just encourage the board, if there's any engineering items that you want to follow up on or items to be discussed, make sure that Chelsea gets those items prior to, I'd say probably Monday, prior to a Tuesday ten o'clock meeting. And that way she can have that direct interaction and quarterback that engagement with, with engineer.
It's a reoccurring weekly meeting, Stephen will be onsite.
Perfect. Okay, uh, yes. Uh, yes, that's probably a really great idea.
Well, hell, she's been for here four days.
Chelsea, why don't you introduce yourself?
Thanks.
She's been here like four days already, I mean, it's.
You don't have to email yet. My name is Chelsea O'Reilly, I am the district manager, as you all heard, I, today's day four, so I'm diving right in. Bear with me, I have business cards, so I can pass those out if you care to have my information. So I have an open door, trying to get my bearings, learn, you know, figure out team, teamwork here and I'm hoping to make some good, good, good changes, anticipating that there definitely will be changes. So have some patience with me, but will be a lot more community involved moving forward for sure, so.
And I think Jimmy Buffett's going to be in our office.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, so Chelsea does come before my speech, and if you try to call Lauren, she's forwarding that to Chelsea. So we're, thank you, and thank you, Margaret, for calling that out.
Thank you, thank you.
Shame on me. Okay, um, so moving on to, speaking of which, district manager reports.
Okay, so, um, having kind of been in the background for the last month or two and just kind of observing, I've noticed some staffing gaps that I, I think that we need to fill. And the quickest way to fill those is with the contract. Laura brought this to the last meeting, this contract would, so let me just preface this with, I did contact Tetra Tech prior to starting any discussions with AECOM. Tetra Tech does not have any field staff that they could provide for the services that we need. This is more of a construction, engineering, inspection, admin, extra set of eyes overseeing a bunch of little one-off projects, helping staff kind of get ahead. So this contract would be with AECOM. They have some staff available that would be here minimum three days per week. It would essentially be assisting L in kind of any one-off projects that come off. Apparently checking out the golf course is one of them now. And it would be through the end of the fiscal year and hoping to hire a public works manager in between now and the new fiscal or at least getting somebody on, so.
Basically replacing Scott.
Yes.
Who was helping out in the absence of.
Yes.
AECOM is a consulting engineering firm?
Yes, sir. And I, I have worked with them previously at, at the beach. I haven't necessarily worked with the gentleman that they've assigned, but we have, staff have met him and I, I don't foresee there to be any issues. The, the beauty of having a, an engineering firm is, as you all know, they can reach back if there's particular issues that arise that they can reach back to their, their team and say, hey, you know, is it a stormwater issue, is it a water issue, is it a, whatever it may be.
And has, has Tetra Tech worked with AECOM before?
I believe so, not necessarily this division, because they're kind of different, at least the Astero office is different than what this contract deals with. But Danny did not have any issues with this.
Where, where are these guys located?
He lives.
Are they local?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're local, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And so are they highway or general civil?
They, they do everything. This guy has a lot of the background and experience of what we're looking for with assisting in these smaller one-off projects.
Um, and so this is, the, the contract is for pretty much this one resource or we can also leverage?
We could leverage.
Multiple resources, so we can do ad hoc requests for things that we need, okay. Yeah, and I think it's.
Me to chime in or?
You can, yeah.
Chelsea, Chelsea sent was the contract that AECOM has with Lee County. Perform a whole range of services.
Yeah.
And so there's piggyback clause in that and that's what this contract is basically piggybacking on that contract. And they're a large organization. Does this gentleman have pond bank restoration experience at all?
He has stormwater, but not necessarily pond.
Okay, he has storm.
Again, we can reach back into the pool.
Okay. That seems to be our biggest need.
I know there's been some sidewalk concerns mentioned and street light and.
There's a lot of things, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great. And so you need, uh, this is just an update, there.
This is, this would be, this would be the approval to execute the contract.
We're hoping to have the search first.
Yes.
So is this kind of our action items?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to.
And the prior authorization for the Scott Cottle can't just be rolled into this?
No, because it was.
Different contract.
Okay, all right.
What, what, what item is this? What is it? Oh, okay. Oh, it's, okay, but it's not an actual, it's not an item, an action item.
Yeah, it should be. It is on here.
I don't.
It's, it's not that way, it's actually three C I.
Okay, so, so the approval's falling underneath the.
District boundary.
Yeah, okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve?
All right, so move. Second.
I have a motion a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And again, now that, just for the, for the board, just as a reminder, now that we've got a district manager, we will fall back to our, our standard practices where the district manager manages the day-to-day, is responsible for, you know, staff decisions. Any budget items that fall within their threshold, they have the, the ability to approve. Of course, we appreciate anything coming to the board for awareness, but we're gonna try to get back to our standard practices, which is let the board provide direction, let the district manager and staff manage the day-to-day.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Feel free to call me.
Oh, yeah, don't worry. You don't have to ask that more than twice. And Laura, well, I'm sorry, Chelsea, did you have more?
Uh, no, we just, we'll delve right into, so I apologize for the late turn, just handed you all the very, very draft. Okay, preliminary budget, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura to kind of go into some of the details to understand this is very, very preliminary.
Like hot off the press, we got it about two hours ago. Um, I have a couple of other things for us before we get into that.
Sure.
I did, because we are in the, as part of our twenty-three budget and the, the bond validation, we had talked about new administration building. So I was looking at different sites around the area and Doug, you and I had talked to about up by the pool, that area there. Tony did some work to see how that was zoned and there actually is a, a deed that appears to restrict us from doing something like that there. So I reached out to WCI to see if they would be interested in removing that restriction from the deed. I haven't heard back yet, but I did reach out to see if that was. Right next to the pool, all that big open area up by the pool, the commons area up there.
That whole.
But that we already own.
Twenty acres that we own.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, part of the, the conversation, just as a little backstory for the board, you know, we know we have a facilities issue.
Right.
We have constraints at this location, so we were just trying to brainstorm.
Part of our CIP plan was to do a building and so we're looking at alternatives to a tear down here, like is there other sites or land available inside a gateway that we could use to build a building?
So we, we, we had identified some other land that is for sale. And then in conversations that, that we were having, it's like, well, we do own a very significant amount of property at the commons area that we had talked about originally, putting some type of administrative building there. So instead of having to spend money to buy, we can let, we could potentially leverage the land that we have. Again, not, not in place of potential, you know, recreational facility, but in addition to utilize the, the land. But again, just, just.
How do you get around it, the fact that that's a park, this isn't a park use?
Well, we're coming to administrate, because the, what we talked about previously in a couple of different occasions was if we run out of space here, there is an option to split maintenance and operations versus administration. And so I think there was some conversations we had around the park because we could put administrative building that becomes our forward-facing administrative and this would be an operation space.
Well, I understand that, but even an administration building, does that fall under the deal of a?
That's what.
That's, that's why I'm asking them to.
The two components, one is the deed that has that covered in there. The second one, we can make a request for zoning verification letter from Lee County as to what the allowable uses are. Board wants me to work with Chelsea and Laura on preparing that and saying it's Lee County, just so we know upfront.
Either way, that property right now is restricted to recreational uses only. It would behoove us to have the most flexibility that we can possibly have and get that restriction released by the WCI. So.
I've reached out to start that process.
Yes, so if it's, if it's an admin building or if we want to stick strictly with the whole Montez plan and have it be only recreational, we want to give the board as much availability to do with your land with what you wish to do.
So this is really just due diligence that we're, we're going through, looking at options and due diligence.
Right.
So with the boards, I work with Chelsea and Laura, again, on zoning verification letters, wanting to do that also to have that available.
Sure.
From Lee County, they can say yea or nay.
We've got a consensus from the board.
Yes.
Along that same lines, there was a piece of property that the board had given me permission to reach out to the realtor on. I did do that, we've been going back and forth negotiating and working out terms and have come to a consensus and they've accepted an unofficial email offer of nine hundred thousand for the property. We do need, their next steps would be the, it's two lots, yes, it's, it's a very large piece of property, give us a lot of flexibility. They, it is nine hundred thousand for the land. The next steps would be to go ahead and do, I talked to Tony about this before, they mean, there's a, the LOI, letter of intent that we would have to fill out and, and do, that doesn't lock us into buying it, we're just saying, yes, we're interested in buying it. This is the amount that we agreed upon to spend, next steps would be to get an appraisal to make sure that it supports what they're asking for.
What's the acreage?
Let me find that for you, I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Two, two and a half acres, no.
Probably about one.
Reason I'm asking, what about, has anybody looked at the Nielsen property? When you go, at least that's what it used to be called, not Bob. When you go, you've been here long enough, good Lord, it's been four days. When you go south, right straight across from the Boulevard Deli, the Nielsen family was supposed to be building a hundred townhouses on that and it just sets, sets up against the back of the golf course and that lake. It's a piece of property that probably is, if those other two lots are two, two and a half acres, I'm gonna guess it's about the same, maybe a little bit bigger. Direct access right out onto Gateway Boulevard.
All right.
Right across from Gateway Boulevard Deli.
We'll add that to our list of due diligence and come back with the multiple options. We'll add that to our list of due diligence and come back with the multiple options and some.
Might be a little less price than that other one.
Two point two acres.
Each or total?
Total.
That's what I figured, about two and a half. Okay. I'm going to guess this one might be just a skosh bigger.
Okay.
But I don't think it'll have anywhere near that price.
And I guess the request is the authorization to finalize the letter of intent. The letter of intent will then sort of give the parameters about the parties agree that they were trying to work towards the contract with this purchase price and these sort of terms. And ultimately, the purchase price, I mean, the purchase agreement will have the hard terms that comes back before the board. Is what we're contemplating.
Just looking for approval to go ahead and issue the send the letter of intent to.
Sign the letter of intent for nine hundred thousand.
Which does not bind us.
Correct.
And we'll make sure that says in there it can be terminated anytime by either party.
Yes.
And if if the board would be interested in us pursuing that, we're more than happy to, or we can wait and do some more due diligence. That's up to you.
Uh, I my I think what I'd like to do is have you do due diligence on that other on the other.
Boulevard property.
The other piece of property, and then that way we can might have a little bit to compare against to understand one is more desirable than than the other.
If you if you line these three up that you're talking about, the one that you're dealing with, the one I just mentioned, and the park, and you do any type of a cost analysis, that park can jump out like a sore thumb advantageous wise, as far as dollar value. And the rate at which we are doing the park and the rate at which it looks like we're going to do the park is that that would be much better used for the admin than anything else.
Well, both both of which are in in the bond validation for an admin building, regardless of where it's at and the park plan. So again, it's policy direction on how the board would like us to pursue.
Tony, just what is the district's? What's our position on being able to sell property that we that we own?
If the board makes determination of the property, surplus real estate, the board can do that.
Cannot hear. I apologize. If the board was to make a determination that there's surplus real estate that it wishes to sell, the board can make that determination, make the determination that the sale of it to a third party private person is in the interest of the district. And unlike cities and counties that have a certain criteria outlined in their statutes, there's really nothing set in stone for CDDs, but it has to be look out for the best interest of the district.
Is there any?
What are you talking about?
Is there any restrictions on capital gains or any what you can sell?
I'm not a tax person, but I doubt the I doubt the district is subject to capital gains. I mean, you were talking about the first.
Well, I mean, to sell. I mean, you can't sell park property. That that would be an absolute nightmare trying that.
Well, the only area that I'm thinking about is the the fun part. You know, that that property there, if we are looking to if we are to basically reallocate those facilities to much larger than that, that piece of property may become redundant.
Yeah, kill three birds with one stone. All the problems that thing has.
At least three. But again, I just wanted to understand what our what our what was what our potential was.
Moving.
I got the I got the they want to hold on that until.
Was that consensus?
Yeah, unless you feel like there's there's, you know, there is a risk. I think we're fine with waiting till the next.
Yeah, as long as we have an option.
Why don't we move in parallel? Proceed with this and then check the other one. Like you said, you get that third option to check on the property across.
We're not obligated. We can back out.
There's no harm than just want to check it all out while you're doing your other due diligence.
Okay.
But if the other if the across the Boulevard comes in at six hundred thousand or something, well, obviously, that would be a more desirable. Put our attention.
Okay. I have two more, well, three counting the budget. Then basically, just my time in the last few weeks has been getting things ready for Chelsea to be here, and now that she's here helping get her onboarded. And I did get a timeline today from Granicus. That's what we're going to be going to for our agenda management. You approved the expenditure, so he sent this over today. We've already completed these steps here. We are, the next thing is the public records and meeting automation project kickoff looks like will be go live sometime September, no later than end of October. So by next fiscal year, we'll be on with our new software.
One of the things we talked about must have been a month or two ago, and I thought it was a consensus, was that when we got the new budget, we were going to have footnotes to explain how these numbers are arrived at. I don't see any footnotes.
I'll let Stephen speak to that when we get there.
And I'm I'm not talking about the ones that are seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents. I'm talking about maybe five digit numbers or six digit numbers. We have no clue what these numbers are if there's a footnote.
Got it.
And just in regards to the uh the technology, we we're also in discussions on just simple enhancements. And as we get a little bit further down the road on that, we'll be able to share that with the board, and it's just like updating our our desk and maybe some uh some things in this room.
Okay, one, just before we delve into budget and turn it over to Stephen to kind of go over what you see in front of you. This is a very generic org chart that Laura put together. The red boxes would be new positions or reallocated positions. As you may recall, Laura actually used to fill the position of business manager. I would like to transition that position more of a to a contracts manager, public information officer. You guys have a lot of great things that are going on in the community, and we need to get the word out on those, take some of those duties away from Laura and have her time better focused on other things than a Facebook post. We would like to do some reorganization of the maintenance and landscaping and pool staff, so I'd like to get them under one supervisor and have that person have direct reports. So that recreation manager, which I just found out, I think yesterday.
It's in the budget for this year.
Yeah, so it's just not filled. I think adding a couple maintenance positions, you need more boots on the ground. Get eyes out in the field more and following up with con contracts and the oversight of work being done and staying on top of things, having those recre those two additional recreational maintenance positions will, I believe, will really help. And then the last thing is, I I mentioned it earlier with the Acom thing, but hopefully hiring a public works manager in house and after next fiscal year. So I wanted you to see this, and if you had any questions, please let me know.
And Chelsea and I had talked about as well with that recreation maintenance, maybe having some of that be like a later in the day kind of thing, like you had talked about keeping tabs kind of on the soccer field, making sure that stays cleaned up, things like that, so that everybody would work the same shift.
I mean, I think our position is, we approve the budget. You build the staff. Uh, that's that's what my position is. I mean, I don't think we need to get in the weeds on whether you need a this manager or this whatever. If we approve the budget, it's your responsibility to build the team around you to best support the needs of the of the district and support the residents at the highest quality.
Understanding that with new positions come cost and comes potentially a budget increase, and so that's why this was as part of this budget.
Well, I'm glad you said that. Does this represent an increase? Because I keep hearing all the positions are budgeted.
Well, for example, we didn't have, the public works manager was actually in the budget for this year. It would it's been vacant for the entire fiscal year. The recreation manager position was in the budget for this year. It's been vacant for the entire year. The business manager position was in the budget for this year. That's been vacant this this entire year. So this is, it's kind of like a.
So the top three are budget neutral.
Uh, the contracts manager would be hired at a higher rate than what was in the budget, and then we are adding some positions down here. This was.
Are going up. Yes, it's happening. You have more positions.
What? Four heads.
Yes.
We're increasing headcount.
So what I think what's important to know is, so where the headcount is, is almost irrelevant. It's the total amount budgeted for for resources. So whatever you can do with the budget that's allocated today is what you have today, whether that's four positions, two positions, one position. Okay, as we move forward in this new budget season.
This is what this is referring to.
Whatever is the, you know, the the delta and what you have and what you need, that's what we'll have to approve from the budget perspective.
Yes.
And we will cross that bridge. We'll get there. This is this is your ideal state. And I'd say hire what you can, what you can find within budget constraints for today, and then we will look at.
Hire and fill the positions we've already allocated.
Yes, but based on the budget, that's 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 true.
This this one in the red that's contracts manager, what is that?
That would be a a contracts manager, all of the bidding, all working oversight.
Person that we're going to hire to do?
Yes.
That's not a full time job.
With the public information, you'd be surprised. There's a lot of contractual stuff that I'd like to streamline and get, you have multiple staff doing various bids and purchases and quotes. I I truly believe this is.
Are we trying to basically call this a business manager? Because I'm I'm not really enthused about that.
But they're going to be handling contracts.
Listen, I would say let.
Let them come up with a proposal.
Find what you need, and if it doesn't work, then you can make adjustments.
Alright.
There are responsibilities assistant district manager has been doing, and certainly that's been one of them, but bring it forward.
Yeah, and the other one is, is can we somehow go to that chart there and fill it in the names of what we got that fills in those positions so we can see what we have and who's assigned to those various items?
We'll do that.
That that would help a lot.
Okay, okay. Okay, Laura, back to you.
Yes, I would turn it over to Stephen. We're at the budget discussion portion of the meeting. Again, we this is hot off the craft. Frank came in, was back and forth. We do not have Pelicans in here. I will do that caveat. We haven't gotten their budget from them yet. I did get Stony Brooks this morning, so that was updated. It needs a little fine tooth on our end yet, but we wanted to have something for you to at least look at, to give you ballparks before we get you something for the meeting on the second. I told them I needed it by Monday at the latest. So, yeah, Monday at the end of the day.
Can you just move a little bit so I can see it?
Thank you.
That point, Mr. Geppert, that's a great point. Monthly, one of the things that I I plan on doing moving forward is providing monthly reports, having staff provide those and only attend the second meeting of the month and provide written updates of anything. And then if you have questions, that way they're not here at every meeting and better use of our community's dollars.
An example of what I was talking about earlier is go to page six. Waterway Management Services payroll salaries thirty one, four oh six, projected twenty twenty two, sixty nine, seven oh three, twenty three budget. How did we make that quantum leap? What 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 was?
Well, let's let's wait for Stephen to even get into it. Did you did you want to jump to staff, wrap out staff?
I would recommend that.
Okay, so Stephen, we're just going to hold off on getting the budget. We're just going to let's complete staff updates. So they're not sitting around. Kenny, are you going?
Yes.
Glad to see you're not pawning off your update to another member of staff. Good to see you in the boardroom.
Kenny Hall, utility director, I just wanted to go over real fast the Callaway Greens sewer break. Prior prior to the rains kicking in, when I first came to the board with this to to let you know what was going on. The Cal, or the championship drive lift station where this break is emptying into is running at five, five point five hours a day. Three days, four days before we were set to go into the ground and do this job, we got five inches of rain. And Mother Nature kind of just threw my plans to the nines. So we're just going to have to attempt this as a normal sun summer break. This is a surgical break. Of all the breaks I've done in this community in my time here, this one has got me more nervous than any of them. There are so many things that can go wrong. We were trying to negate the as much risk as we can. We played musical contractors. I had BJ Enterprises, who was our bread and butter utility person. They've been working with us for over twenty years. I had to order, I had to get them in line eight weeks out. So as with any contractor right now for the last two years, you're good eight eight weeks out before you can get them on the books. And with five inches of rain and the kind of precision, we're going to need to do this repair. Five inches of rain after being that dry, I just called it off. There's just too much risk to us for me to do that. So we are going to attempt it again June third, Tuesday, not this Tuesday, but the following Tuesday for the entire week. I just gave notification to the community to let them know what's going on. This is going to be a mess. This is a.
Two thirds is not a Tuesday.
Whatever the Tuesday is after tomorrow. I just.
The next board meeting.
Not this, not this week, but the week after Tuesday, after. May the first. Through January, through through June third for the two repairs. But as a in in the best of circumstances, this is a complicated repair. And we have fire hydrant, water mains, everything that you can possibly throw into this on top of cutting the road and going down to about seven feet to get to this pipe to repair it. So I'm going to have a spectacularly large amount of gray hairs by the time this is done.
Kenny, make sure that we get and identify the pipe that penetrates that service ladder. Because we we might be able to go after a
We 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 went back as far as eight one went. We went back as far as eight one went.
Subsidized cost of this.
We don't know what's in that pipe. That's that's the real issue, because when we get down there, we don't know what's there.
When you cut it, you'll find out.
We're going to cut the pipe, lift it up, and then put the repair under it. That's the plan for right now.
See if we can ID the pipe.
Yes.
Who the carrier is.
Absolutely. And say, that's that's where we're at with that. That is is going to necessitate a irrigation shutdown for the that entire championship drive one. I'll put out the the necessary notification. It's it's going to be after nine P M. Nobody should be watering anyway. But there's a water main or an irrigation main that's going to be running right next to that, and should that main break with an open sewer, it'll be just an absolute catastrophe, among other things that go wrong. So that's where we're at with that. So and that's pretty much all I have. We have one more new licensed water, licensed water distribution. Ryan Ellsworth finally got his water distribution license, so we have four now for good for him, and that's that's all I have for you all.
Soon as we get those samples back in on the water, that could be an interesting situation.
Yes, we shall soon. And I say, you saw my email.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to stormwater update, L.
Good afternoon, L Harris, Gateway Services Stormwater. I prepared my report for you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those. Do my best to answer for you.
I wrote it. I didn't have any questions.
Only thing I had was just make sure that we cover the golf course side on the reevaluation of ponds, of where we have, where we have escarpments.
Mr. Tinko, we are on the same page there, Stephen and I, and I'm sure Stephen would back me up by saying this, that I have told them all along that the golf course side is is horrible. And it is just as important to fix that as it is the the other sides of the pond. Because again, just like you said, we're out of compliance. If the pond's out of compliance, it's the entire pond. It is not just the rec residential sites. So those are in, just so you know, I tried to get like one oh nine moved up on the list three years ago.
Well, I'm I'm I don't know every pond in Gateway, but I could tell you of all the ones left, one oh nine's got to be at the top of the list.
It is at the top of the list, so is one twenty five, but I could go down the list for you, but I just wanted you to know, yes, I'm out there looking, I'm monitoring, I'm watching it, and really, we're on the same page.
Hey, L, really quick, um is there any, so again, now we're starting to see a lot more gators.
It's mating season.
One less. Somebody hit one the other day on Gateway Greens Drive, about a three footer.
So I I've had several people reach out, because if you were in an HOA, normally the, I I believe the procedure, and this is the way it used to be in Pinecrest, that if if an alligator is identified, and let's just for the sake of argument, let's just call it a nuisance alligator. In order to contact someone, it has to go through either the management company or the HOA. They have the authorization.
No, they don't. Sorry. It goes through Gateway Services because we own the ponds.
Okay, that's.
When we we have an assigned trapper, we have a trapping permit, which is up for renewal, and I'll get with Laura and Chelsea on that next week. We have an assigned trapper by F W C. When the HOA or homeowner calls F W C, the SNAP program, they generally call here and ask for permission to have a tripper, a trapper go on our property.
So just for the sake of argument, if if I'm in a, you know, any community, if if I notice a a gator, and again, for the sake of argument, let's call it a nuisance gator. I call the hotline, and that's.
Call Gateway Services, send an email to customer care at Gateway Services. We'll take care of it. I'll have a trapper out within the next day or two.
There there is a misconception, it's been around here for eons, that owners that have a problem with a gator can call their HOA and the HOA authenticate, that they can call the trapper and have the gator removed. It's 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 bull. It's not true.
That's what I call.
It's not true.
Yeah, please ask them to just either A, call Gateway Services, or send us an email, which is the best way. Yeah, please ask them to just either A, call Gateway Services, or send us an email, which is the best way to customer care.
Okay.
And again, I contact the trapper as soon as I get those, and he actually just removed it.
Is it still Tracy? Is it?
It is.
Yeah.
We will promote that on social media.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
And that's covered in the president's meeting.
The, the key to it is nuisance. Just going out and trapping them because you don't want a gator in your backyard is ridiculous.
Right.
Now, if it's making advances or being aggressive, that's a different story.
Right, and generally an aggressive gator has been fed by someone. Gators having natural fear of humans, I can't tell you how many times I walk around the wet, the, the wetland or the ponds, and they're running off to get away from me.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood the process and that process is communicated. So, okay, thank you, Elle. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, now we will proceed to budget. So Stephen.
No landscape?
He's not here.
Jim's not here.
Okay.
If you have any questions, follow us.
So now we will proceed to the, to the budget. So Stephen, if you wouldn't mind, if you just kind of lead in almost with some of Ed's comments, can you just kind of walk us through, you know, your, the steps to doing this, anything we need to know before going into the actual numbers, please?
Sure. Good afternoon. First, I want to make sure you guys can hear me okay. So, yeah.
Bobby and, and Bill, can you guys hear okay online?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, so as mentioned earlier by Chelsea, this is a, you know, what I'm calling a, almost a pre, preliminary, like a draft version. We just wanted to, to get you a opening set of documents. To Mr. Tinkle's point, and he's absolutely correct, we had several discussions about this last year. So there, there's two things a little bit different that we're going to do this year. The first is the version tracking. So you'll, you'll, you know, after this first version, you will get a, a specific tracking document that shows you, you know, exactly what changed, you know, line by line. And then the second piece is, and, and we couldn't do it today because we're still kind of, you know, getting numbers and getting stuff together, is we will be going, you know, kind of line by line for the large, you know, dollar amounts, variances, and, and providing details as to, you know, why is this going up or why is this going down? That type of stuff, which was again, something that we discussed kind of as we were going through the different versions last year. So those are, those are, you know, pieces that you'll see moving forward, not so much with this first version as we were, you know, kind of really trying to get something out for you today. But definitely something as we move forward, you know, something that'll be a part of the package. The other thing that, that I'll address real quickly before I kind of go through some other top level things. In, in terms of your staffing plan, when you look at the staffing plan that was provided in this version and compare it to last year's budgets, there is actually a, a net increase of only one. So while there certainly will be things that we will have to discuss, you know, similar to what Mr. Tinkle brought up about different departments and why the payroll numbers are, are changing drastically, which, you know, can be explained with some, you know, some different things. Really, overall, you know, as you look through this, there's only a one net position increase. You know, there are certainly different titles that were changed. You're aware of, of certainly salary adjustments that have been made, position titles and things. And those would be really more of the, of the explanation than it will be, hey, X number of, of people were added or whatever. So that's kind of a important thing to keep in mind a, as you're kind of going through this. Most of, I, I think just top level, really without seeing the P-PAC numbers, when you look at the general fund and you go through the different departments, unlike maybe in prior years where you'll see, you know, large maintenance items start popping up through the different departments. This year, I think we're going to be spending a lot of it, a lot of our time talking about the payroll differences. So that's why it will be important for us to track that because that's really a significant part of, of what you're going to see. Now, again, stay in top level. We did provide in there some preliminary assessment charts. Russ, who I believe is, is, is on the line, Russ is still going to be doing his magic, and that's something that he still has to do. And as we've talked about, and I believe, Mr. Tinkle, you mentioned it at either the last meeting or two meetings ago, about Russ kind of going through and not just putting in the numbers, but really kind of taking a look at the, the methodology itself and, and trying to make sure that there isn't anything significant that has to change. I just wanted to mention that that is a step that still has to, to occur. So what you're seeing there is, is basically based off of the twenty-two approach and units and, and everything. And while it certainly will change, it does give you, you know, a, a starting point to look at where this budget is and how the, the assessments numbers compares a year over year. So just to kind of, just, you know, for example, when you look at the single family residential, just for the Gateway Area One and Two, the budget you have in front of you right now has a, got a fifty-nine dollar increase year over year, and obviously that's the, the total amount annual. Just again, some perspective as we go through it, obviously we've got a lot of discussions to have line by line, projects and all that good stuff. But I wanted to, you know, certainly have a, a good starting point for you to think about. The other thing I wanted to mention, because it's.
Steve?
Yes.
I, I, I thought we were going to get rid of this last year. Page two is so misleading, it's not funny. We don't, we aren't operating under this system anymore. Our methodology has nothing to do with the EAUs of single family golf course unplanted. Those things mean nothing anymore. We now have those three or four categories that make up that, for example, single family, three, thirty-three hundred and forty-nine EAUs. Eight oh two ninety-nine, the eight oh two ninety-nine is not a function of thirty-three forty-nine divided into any number. It's three or four numbers made up that add. That's my whole deal is, nobody understands this stuff. They are confused by this. We need to be showing, for example, how is eight oh two ninety-nine calculated? I know it's not a number divided by thirty-three forty-nine. It's the parks and rec, it's stormwater management, it's roads, and it's admin. And each one of those have a different deal. This is very misleading to the public of showing this, this chart to, to show dollars. In fact, not misleading, it's just wrong.
Well, and, and while I, I do not disagree with what you're saying, that is something we will have to get with Russ because as you just mentioned, there are a lot of pieces that go into that calculation, and I'm not sure.
This, the, this, the most difficultly challenged can understand it. Single family, stormwater, parks and rec, admin, and what's the other one? One more? I thought there were four. Three, three categories. Just list those three categories and show the dollar values and the three added equals eight oh two ninety-nine. I mean, you, you can't be any clearer. People can then see right there what is causing our rates and charges to be what they are. And they're going to see real quick, like what we pretty much here on the board already know, and it's stormwater management. It rules the roost. That's where the money's going. You look at this budget, you couldn't tell that for squat. Alls you see is eight oh two. You don't know what caused it. So I, I'd like to see this, this page two be changed such that you can understand it.
Okay.
Is that direction from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think our, our budget should align with our methodology. And it's pretty simple.
Yep, we'll work with Russ on that to be able to come up something new. And, and I know we have talked about that, and that was something we obviously threw at the end of, at the end of our process last year. Again, really all we did for this, this first version was reproduce what we had last year, just as a starting point. It was, it was never.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you an example, Steve, real easy. Is that, that eight oh two ninety-nine, was that guestimated? Or was that Russ running the numbers through the methodology?
The eight oh two ninety-nine was based on the Russ's methodology. Russ did not run those numbers himself. But every year, Russ creates a file that has about ten to twelve different tabs in it that takes our total budget by category and runs it through all of the different pieces. And then at the end of it, it spits out a summary table, very similar to what you see there. So no, this eight oh two ninety-nine would be exactly what the number you would get off of last year's budget as we were working through it. That's why it's just a starting point. Now what Russ has got to do is he's going to rebuild a, a new set of tables based on our preliminary summary information and, and basically recreate, in a certain degree, all of those tabs. And then every time we change numbers, we would then take the summary numbers, you know, total parks, total admin, and put them back into his charts.
And, and Stephen, just for the sake of argument, why wasn't that done at the first pass?
It, it was just a timing issue with getting the information and then giving Russ enough time to be able to get through it.
Okay, I, I've had conversations with Russ relative to the Pelican Preserve methodology. Is Russ on the line?
I'm here.
Okay. Consideration, the, the homes that have now been platted, this Pelican Preserve is finally built out. And the impact, whatever it's going to be of the C-five community, negligible, but it's, it has an impact. I think in our last board meeting, it was requested that you be contacted and update the methodology. Is that in line with what you're thinking to do?
You're asking me, Mr. Geppert? This is Russ. Yeah, yeah, I've, I've actually have, have already done most of that, and I have taken, there is nothing that's really changed the gateway. We really haven't anything new that's been platted at this point. So gateway really isn't going to change. But in terms of Pelican Preserve, Casella's now all platted, so we don't have any blank land to attribute us debt to or assessment to, I should say that. O and M assessments to, and then the, the C-five, they have a hundred and sixty platted units, and now that is included in the new methodology. And we're still kind of looking at, at the golf course in, in terms of how that would work.
Looking at what I'm looking at on page three. Of Stephen's budget, or is that a TBD?
No, that's not Stephen's because I just finished this. I just finished doing it after we met. So I have not plugged this version of the budget in yet. I just, actually, I just got it last night from Stephen.
If I understand things correctly from Stephen and Russ from you, this first pass is a first pass based on kind of historical methodology or what, what we, what we've had up to this point. Our next iteration will have the alignment to our, to our assessment methodology and all pertinent adjustments, i.e. Pelican and other areas. So this gets us to first pass. Now, I would have liked for first pass to have had all these items included. And moving forward, hopefully we, we will be there. But is that the expectation from everyone?
Certainly. If, we, we're going to go through five renditions of this. There's no doubt if we're lucky. What I'd like to see, what's been the, my frustration the last seventeen years is trying to understand this because it is, it's a moving target. And with the methodology, it's even worse. My specific example would be, we're going to mess around with this thing, and we're going to mess around with it in areas of moving stormwater, moving admin, adding admin, parks and rec. If we would add, for example, and we'd get down to that, what happens? We start that what if because we try to shave the rate. We do it every year. If we cut a hundred thousand out of stormwater, I don't want to have to do a rocket science approach here. I want to be able to have a program set up that if we take a hundred thousand out of stormwater management, this will just go bang, 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 until the effect of each one of those categories of what a hundred thousand meant to them. Because it's not the same for single family and commercial as we know. It's equivalent running off units.
Well, what I'd like to see too, Ed, is.
But that, that way we know the impact, because we, we sit here and think that a hundred thousand dollars is a hundred thousand. It's not. A hundred thousand dollars to a single family home on stormwater management is not anywhere near as significant is to somebody that's got a high runoff coefficient.
So what I'd like to see during this iteration is, is just a little bit better in, in tracking modifications and updates from one version to the next. I'd like to see some comments. So if a hundred thousand is pulled out of here or twenty thousand pulled out of here.
Yeah.
Have a comment, twenty thousand, you know, negative this date. And if there is a little bit of justification, fine. I at least want to have one master document that's got notes and, you know, some tracking. So we don't get to version four and we go, hey, I thought we had thirty thousand dollars in this. Well, we did, but we, we moved here. Are you sure? I can't remember. And then we, we chase our tail.
Well, I don't, I don't want to demean Chelsea, but she's coming in and not knowing all the history. It used to be we were simply a stormwater management based system. So when we add up all the EAUs, technically we add up all the dollars, divide one by the other, and that is the rate. We don't have that anymore. So doing it that old fashioned way will get you in a lot of trouble. And we need to have this page here and the one for Bob's on Pelican because they're, they've got a similar issue. That, that when we move these numbers around, which we will do, we know exactly what the impact is because if we do it this way, we're going to get down to the end. We're going to find out we've got sticker shock because it isn't the same.
Can I make a suggestion for? I was thinking, because based on what I, if I'm interpreting what you're asking for, and the easiest way to show this would be like what's on page two, and just not show the EAUs and the units, they can be hidden, and where it says general fund, you'd have the three columns. You'd have the one for admin, one for stormwater, and then the one for parks and rec. Just have the three columns there. So the general fund would total, but it would be split across the three columns to show what the three items are.
I almost don't want to waste time going through this today because I.
No, that, when that wasn't my intent was to go through this and ask for comments. So basically, here's where we're at. This is what we have. I didn't want you guys to see it for the first time at the meeting on the second.
So we weren't going to go through this today.
No, no.
Here's a starting point. Let's get familiar with it.
Well, I'm glad we did this because it gives us on the deal.
Prior to this being updated, I guess this is a request for Russ. When you update the Pelican portion, I would like to have the review like we had the last time, and I'm going to invite the P-PAC chairman to it. If you can walk us through that like we did a couple of weeks ago, then we'll be comfortable.
Okay.
Yeah, and for the record, Russ Wire again. And Mr. Tinkle, just so you know, I already have that workbook set up where we can just plug in the three categories or silos of funds and it kicks it out for us. Basically, what we need to do is get the budget, run it through, and I know what you're looking for. And, and I don't know, Chelsea, did you circulate the bond financing stuff?
Yep, that's later on.
Yeah.
We'll have your presentation.
But, but the only reason I'm saying that is because if you saw the charts in there, it did, I think, what Mr. Tinkle was looking for. And that is it showed the roadways for single family, and it showed the, the amounts for water management for single family, and it showed the administration slash parks rec in there, and then it had a total. So I think that's, I understand what you're looking for. I think we can do that. We can already do that. I just have to go find those little areas and pull them back into one chart so that when we plug it in, it'll get, it'll calculate it right away.
Yes, the things that we were wanting, those are in flight.
Again, full transparency, the board requested that the June, the June second date be your high watermark date. So we wanted to get something in front of you as soon as we possibly could. We skimmed this this morning. Definitely over the next two weeks, this is, this is going to change.
That's, well, and, and this should be the priority because again, that high watermark's important to set the, well, set the mark.
Since I'm the coordinator of the budget, anything that you guys, questions, if you, numbers, if there's something we missed or something you don't understand, please let me know. And I will make sure that that gets communicated.
Can you, can you have Steve and Russ get page two revision, even if it's draft in the format that we're looking for? Get that out to us on this version.
Stephen?
On this version, so we can have an idea what the heck this is. This right now to me is meaningless.
No, I understand.
Well, let's, let's start with version one. So any modification that's made, any, whatever.
Please send anything to me and I.
We will start with version one. Based on this document, we'll just make some modifications, but we will start with, with that clean version of one. This is for awareness to get us started.
This should get us started.
This is where we're at as of today with, so it needs work.
Any other just general comments on structure for, for Russ or for Stephen or staff?
Just give us some dates for the Pelican meeting and I'll be happy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you in advance.
Well, if, if they didn't have Pelican Reserve, what is this that's on page three?
Those are all things assumed remaining equal to last year. The only thing that would have been updated would have been.
I know it has not been. And that's why I want to see the impact. That's exactly right.
The only thing that would have changed on there would have been the impact from the staffing changes that we made, but they don't have any input on that.
Yeah, because they had quite a bit of change in the EA, like a better term, the EAU count.
Sure.
Ours, I don't think is that big of a change.
No, I think it's unique to us.
Yours did.
No, yeah, Russ, Chelsea and I talked for about a half an hour about it yesterday.
Okay, good.
All right.
We missed an item before, sorry.
What's that?
We missed an item. Tony has something.
No, just one comment. I, I understand the conversation about how you want to see the budget from the standpoint of the allocation that's split out. But recall that when we end up having revised assessment methodology, when you do the publication of the paper, you have to indicate if there's going to be an increase. In the mail notices, you need to indicate how many units are assigned each parcel. each parcel in the total, so that each person knows how many EAUs are assigned to their property.
Means nothing.
But that's required.
Okay, so we just need to insert two columns.
Yeah, put it in and just add the other, but it's...
At the end of the day, we need to have that.
The problem is, you get residents that look at this, and they do, and they try to take one of these other pages, for example, stormwater management, add it up and divide, and you couldn't hit that math if your life depended on it.
All right, well, let's keep moving, because we're already behind you.
Before you jump to the next item, we did miss an item.
We missed something. It's on the screen.
Yep, so that was put in front of you. In the budget this year, there is $10,000 for special events. This is kind of a very 20,000-foot view of a Fourth of July event that, thinking about putting together for the community. Skim this and kind of give us a nod of the head, yes, this is the general direction you want to go. We'll put together a true event and start getting the wheels turning.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and again, due to the timing, we won't be able to, we won't be able to do fireworks, you know, but I think this is a good thing to do. And please make sure that anything we send out, or in our communication plan, that we make sure that we, that we get things out to Pelican, because sometimes that, you know, trickle-down information over there isn't, isn't always there. And we'd love for the Gateway as a whole to be able to come over.
Okay, and one part of this little review is any, any participation that you guys can provide, or any volunteering that you guys can provide. We'd appreciate if it's strumming up prizes, or gift certificates, or things like that for...
Any idea, well, let us know if there's anything specific that you need from that, and then we can, we can network and reach out. And I will tell you, the staff has always done a great job of leveraging our vendors and our networks in the past for these types of events.
It is a community event for a reason, so.
That's a new word for squeezing.
Well, while I certainly understand, and completely support it, I just have to point out, the age bracket of the Pelican people, this, you know, a lot of my, no, but don't be disappointed by not a low attendance.
Well, started at noon.
This is not something, yeah.
It started at noon.
I was just getting ready to say, he's showing his age there.
Well, absolutely, absolutely guilty.
You're going to be on the rock wall then, right?
He's going to be on the dump tank. He's on the dump tank. We'll make money on this deal.
All right.
And, and again, I would say, you know, we have, we have a large demographic with, you know, so I think we just need to make sure that we've got things to, you know, for all of our, all of our people. Okay, awesome, great. So move forward, we're all good.
Cool, thank you.
All right, moving quite along to action items. We will circle back to 4A Pelican Preserve Landscape Work Group.
Okay, I don't really have anything to add to what Mr. Cirico said. Would like to table it till next month. We are glacially moving forward, but we are moving forward, and we're all optimistic we're going to come to an agreement.
And I think, in that piece, I know we touched on it, but if we are looking to offset activities to the volunteer group, I'm a huge advocate of Pelican and how they do things. Being able to leverage volunteers and experts is great. I think part of the concern that we had was, if you are delegating responsibility to a volunteer group, how do we hold them accountable, and how do we mitigate risk? So when it's done well, there won't be any issues.
We've answered that, and Tony's...
And we don't have to get into it now, I just wanted, we just wanted to raise that concern.
It's been considered, we're good, and it'll be bottled on the podcast.
And that, we also tabling the P-PAC O and M agreement as well?
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing to talk about yet.
Okay, we're tabling C. We got to find, can we find a new phrase for that? I'm really tired of this. D, discussion and selection of trustee per proposal series 2022 bond.
Does it pay? Pay to be a trustee?
I don't know what this. I don't, I don't know.
That'd be Stephen.
This is a recommendation?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome.
With, with this item, we'll turn it over to Russ to do the bond... Methodology presentation.
That's an item I've missed at some.
It was last minute.
We didn't, we didn't get it tonight, so.
I got it, okay.
Are y'all set for me to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, Russ Wire, Real Estate Econ and Metrics, your assessment methodology consultant. As you know, we're, we're going through two processes, kind of parallel at the moment. One is, we're going through the bond validation process, looking at the capital improvement program that was presented by your engineer last week. And, and there were two parts to that. Again, one was the, the validation of the total program, which came out to be about $60 million, and then doing the first initial bond issuance of about $10 million, or $10 million, correct. So what they asked me to do, and, and when we go through the process, I will do a full written report, which goes through the steps. But the basis of the method, of the methodology for the bond issue and for the bond validation is our operations and maintenance methodology, which we created about a year, two years ago. And it's very, very valid for bonds as well, because we have the same basic categories. We have roadways, we have water management, and we have administration slash parks and rec. So with that, what I wanted to show you, if I can, who has control of that? Somebody have control of that? They can switch to the next, I'm going to, I'm going to do two parts. The first part is the bond validation, because that's the big picture one. That's the one where we go in and, and go to the court and have them validate the bonds for us. So I took the district engineer's report for the bond validation, and it breaks down the cost by the benefiting categories, as you were presented to you two weeks ago. I used the percentage of each engineer category to the, to the total, and applied those percentages to the total finance bond validation amounts, and then inputted those category numbers into the methodology to determine the lien amount by single-family, multifamily, and for each individual commercial parcel. Now, and I don't know, Rhonda, I don't know if Rhonda's on, but we had, what she did is she financed the numbers, or, you know, we have to mark up the numbers for the financing, which includes, we have reserve funds that have to go in there, we have capital interest that, that goes into there, we have a cost of issuance that goes in there, and that's where the attorneys, the assessment methodology consultant, the bond attorneys, all of those people, there's that amount, and then the underwriters discount. So, so you take your 60, it was 60,800, and it goes to 77,400 in total, because again, you have, your reserves are roughly about 6 million, your two years of capital interest is 7 million, so that's a pretty significant amount of it. So I had to use that 77 million number to create the lien, and this is, this is how we did it. The engineering costs, you know, the roadways of the 60, I called 61 million, was about 6.7 million, water management was 38 million, and administration, parks and rec were about 16 million. And that, and that give you an idea of what you're looking at in your total capital improvement program, again, that was presented by the engineer. So when you, when I took those, and I took the percent of the totals, and I took the 77,455, and multiplied it by those percentages to make those categories as they are marked up for financing. And then I put a little chart in there, at the suggestion of, of Chelsea, and, and I think it's good, because it does show, you know, how much of it's going to be roadways, how much of it is going to be water management, how much is administration, which goes to Mr. Tinkle's point, is that a lot of it's water management. That's, that's a lot of the district. So you go to the next page. Can we please? At this point, when we do, what we have to do, it's really, you don't do an assessment, like an annual assessment on this amount. We go in, and we do a debt lien per unit. So when you're doing the bond validation, this is basically, you're saying, when we do the bonds, it will be, for a single-family unit, the lien would be roughly 13,000 per unit. On a multifamily, it would be 9,000 per unit. For the golf course, it's going to be, it's really hard, I need to enlarge that a little bit. Sorry, there we go. Almost 3 million, and then the other commercial totals is about 11.4 million. And that 11.4 million, there's 185 commercial parcels in there that go across, all across the board, because some of them are really small, the real small units in the Daniels project, and then there's some that are, that are very large. So anyway, in total, that's, that's what we would do when we go into the, for the bond validation process. And I will have a full write-up on that, how I got to these numbers, how I put it through the methodology. And I had to, I had to take the methodology a little bit differently. I mean, it's the same, it is the same validation, the same process, and it does have the same benefit. I just had to, had to work the numbers to make it work the way the O and M methodology does. So that's how it came out, yeah.
001 accounted in.
I'm sorry?
This is just the 001 account, correct?
Um...
The bond is just for general fund.
It's general fund, pro 001?
Yeah, this is, yes.
Okay. Is he going to be doing something similar for 002?
No, this is just, the, the bond is for the general fund.
Just, just for the general fund of 001? I thought he had to.
We're not doing any of these things in 002.
The capital projects are for the general.
They don't have any capital projects then?
No.
Okay, okay.
And, and Mr. Tinkle, when I, when I do the budget this year, when I'm working with Stephen, this is how it will look. Is this what you're looking for? In terms of roadway, water management, administration, and then you would have, here's your annual assessment for the year. Okay? And so that's, that's what we will do when we do the bond validation. Then I will have a separate one for the series 2022 bonds. And so on this assessment calculation, this will be closer to what we've been talking about. I took the district engineer's report for the series 2022 bonds, and that was 9,285,000. And when it gets financed, gets marked up and financed, it comes out to 10,530,000. So then I use the same, same thing. It's a little bit different on this one, when you look at the, the allocations, because there, it's, it's, if you go to the next page.
Sorry.
Go to, go to the next page. There you go. The engineering costs, as you see here, we're hitting, roadways was approximately 46%, and so it's heavier than the water management, which was 39% of this bond issue, and then administration, parks and rec are about 14%.
So these costs, was this part of the engineering report?
Yes, remember, you had two, two engineers' reports last, when you had your last meeting. One was for the overall project that we book, looking at for the next, what, 10 years? And then this is for the first bond issue. Through the next, I believe it's for the next three years. Is that correct, Chelsea?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So in this case, then I have these totals, the marked up for financing is about the 10, 530. Now, in this case, we, we have a, already have an amortization table that comes out of this for the next 20 years. And in order, it's kind of a long conversation, but in order to make sure that we have enough funds in there to cover, what, we look at the maximum annual debt service amount. And for this bond issue, that, that amount, I believe it's in year four or year five, is $766,900 that has to be paid. That's what got plugged into the methodology, so I could determine what the annual assessment would be, our product type. Go to the next page? Next page, please?
Next one?
Yep. Oh, wait a minute, go back up, you missed one.
Yeah, I'm like...
Yeah, I'm still want to make sure, this 002 account has no capital projects? None?
No, this is all, all general fund.
So that highlights something that we will definitely need to do, particularly for roadways.
I was going to say, you've got to have something.
We do, and that's, that's my thing.
So that's coming.
That's, that's a TBD, yes.
And it will follow the same process that we did here. We'll just use the, the methodology that we have over there, which is very similar.
You've got to spend...
Well, now, that's not to say they're not some reserve, they're certainly not adequate for this.
So in, in the case of, of this, what I did to is I pushed it through, and this is exactly what you're, I think the table you're looking for, Mr. Tinkle, that will show, when we issue this debt, and it's over 20 years, you can see by single-family, how much is roadway, how much was water management, how much was administration slash, slash parks and rec. The annual assessment would be $125 over a 20-year period. Multifamily would be $81. The golf course would be 20, I'm sorry, it'd be 21, 20, or almost 22,000, and then 155,000 is spread over those 185 parcels on their benefit analysis. And so if it totals, you get 766,9, which covers that debt payment for that year.
Why? Oh, this goes open a can of worms. Why is the single-family 4127, when we were looking at 6,600 on the other deal? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm in error. It was 3349. Well, that's even just as bad. How can it be 3349? Are you counting, no, you got multiple. How did we get from 3349 to 4127?
I think what he's referring to, Russ, is the budget that we got from Stephen. Under the units, there's 3,349 single-family, which on yours says 4,127. But there was a caveat, yes, Tony Brooks not added in there, and then it's using last year's methodology in the budget.
Got it, got it.
We figured it out.
Good. Because I was using last year's methodology.
That MDS, was that on a 10-year or a 20-year financing?
Oh, the Mads was 20-year financing.
20?
Yes.
Great.
Yep. So that's, that's how, so when we issue our first set of bonds, which it won't hit this year, it, because we also have, we have enough capitalized interest in there to cover us for a year, it will hit next year's budget.
So a future effort of Pelican will be to identify these kinds of assets, and to go forward with a similar...
Basically create the same document.
Yes. And we'll cover the same types of items.
Okay. Any additional questions for Russ?
And we are getting a copy of these, this document.
It's, it's in the shared folder, but I, I know you like paper.
Will you just send it out?
Yes.
How'd you get it?
I can't follow the computer.
He whines louder than you.
He what?
He whines louder than you did.
I won't argue about that.
Let's not have a competition around that. So thanks, Russ, we appreciate all your efforts.
Yes, thanks.
So anything else around the budget?
Russ, can you very briefly just kind of explain next steps?
Oh, in terms of, of the, yeah, the next step will be, is I'm going to need, we, we have a bunch of documents that we're going to have to go through for, for both processes. The first one is, we have to do the bond validation before we can issue the bonds, but we're running them in parallel. And, and I know Tony was on our conversation too, from a timing perspective, we need to get in on the court docket to take care of that. So we have a bunch of documents to prepare for that. The schedule, I don't have in front of me, but we do have a schedule and timeline, and everybody, Rhonda's been awesome about that, keeps us on track as best possible. So the next step will be, is to get that bond validation, and then we'll, again, we will take the, the actual bond issue, the series 2022, which I think from a timing perspective, we're looking to October, November. And that's the next steps.
Thank you.
Plus...
All right, moving on to four E. Move funds to additional sports field renovation. So this is a request to move twenty thousand from the carried forward account. Because there's, there's significant work that needs to be done. When is this plan to start?
Uh, it was supposed to start next week, but now it's going to be the week of June. Night, sixth. It got bumped out.
Sixth is that Monday, yeah.
So two weeks from Monday.
So just a question for. Manscaper there, is there? So how can we do a better job of not letting the fields get to that point? And this is, I feel like we have this conversation about every three or four years, where it gets to a point where there's just critical failure. And I don't want to talk about. The use and wear and tear. We've been doing this for a long time. We've had activity on this field. Kids play, they wear cleats, we have rain. We understand that. I understand the turf and what kind of turf we have out there. Just how do we get to a point where we've got five fields? Three of them, if not four, have significant issues. How, how do we, how do we get to this point?
Yep, so uh, J. Arthur's, uh, regional ground manager with Manscape, uh, yes, so primarily fields two, four, and five. Four receiving the most um, excessive play, if you will. Um, what we've seen is, is that it's not only the play on the fields, but it's the practicing. So wherever people park. In the parking lot, they go right closest to that field. So if you look at field five, field four as well, look at field five, the south goal. Where the gold mouth is, that is extensive, uh, extensively worn. When you go to the north side of the field, it's in really, really good shape over there. So. Not only the hours, which have gone up quite a bit in the last couple of years. Uh, but it's the practice, it's the, the, the continued use of them and not kind of rotating. The fields and staying off kind of where the gold mouth areas are. So that's, that's what we've been recognizing and we've been seeing. Uh, we've been doing supplemental aeration on these areas, um, additional top dressing. Um, that we've kind of incurred the cost on to try to.
So when you say top dressing, what, what do you, what does that mean for you?
It means applying sand to the ward areas and to level them out. Uh, player safety is probably one of our biggest concerns. Um, that someone's going to get hurt because of some of the divots that are out there. Um, so we're constantly trying to fill those in. Pushing growth through aeration, through supplemental nutrient applications to try to have those areas fill in. But. Again, the amount of play that's on there, it's, it's not allowing that to happen with the rotation of the fields. Again, two, four, five are the ones that have received the most of that. Um, so we've kind of recommended and suggested that can we switch kind of fields around depending on the leagues and the age groups? To limit the amount of play that's on there. Um, and. They're working with Jim on that quite a bit, talking with Laura quite a bit about that as well and what we can do. So, you know, one of the recommendations is to add an additional deep time aeration, again, break up soil compaction, add additional top dressing. To be done uh, during the season, um, to make sure that those areas are kind of leveled out and, and, and put, and trying to reduce any, any injuries and player safety, increase that capacity.
Well, you're, you're talking deep tiny aeration.
Yes, sir.
Are, are you doing plugging? We have plugging?
Yeah, we're doing.
Plugging?
Well, we haven't done that in the past. I don't think we've ever done plugging.
We have, we, we, we have four in the contract. My team specifically has a core aerator that we go about four to five inches on these worn areas.
One half, five eights, what size?
Uh, I think it's one eights.
One eighth?
Yeah.
That's small.
Yeah, maybe, no, I'm sorry, maybe it's three eights.
Size of a nickel.
And then do you, then do you uh, sand afterwards?
Um, we will sand, Mr. Tinkle, yeah. We will drag those cores in um, after that application.
It's just like when we're on the golf course. If you don't do that, but.
We haven't done that in the past. We, I don't know if we've ever laid sand over when we've done deep time, and I can remember.
It's a practice we should have been doing.
Y- y- yes, sir. We've done it every year since I've been with Manscape. So, um, going back to two thousand and eight. We've been doing this annually and it typically happens.
And you've been laying sand over top?
We've been laying sand, also three oh four sport sand that we do after the May season is shut down. So like Laura was mentioning there, we kind of had it scheduled the week of Memorial Day. We had some issues with the scheduling from the vendor. It is now the week of June sixth. So we will come in, we will deep time. We will apply three oh four sport, sport sand. We've also started to incorporate a product called Command. Uh, which is organic compost into there um, at a sixty forty ratio. Um, water holding capacity, you know, many benefits of, of that product. So we've been doing that annually. What I propose and what Jim and I spoke about before he left for vacation. Is to uh, increase the amount of top dressing out there. Again, so we're trying to fill these areas and we're trying to encourage growth. With the supplemental aeration, we're breaking up stolons, we're encouraging new root.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not in good shape and we're not going to spend the money to re-side those fields.
What's your time spacing?
Uh, I think it's a core or um, a half inch.
Half inch?
Yeah.
So it's pretty good.
Yeah.
As I say, you've just got to get aggressive with that to get those things to work. That's all there is to it. People are going to just raise hell about it, but it, it isn't going to work.
Yeah, Freddie's got a roller that he's using and we've got a, a smaller unit, so we're specifically focusing on the worn areas. The gold mouths, the center of the field, the areas that receive constant.
Well, I, and also too, I mean, here, here's what, I mean, my biggest concern is. I mean, if, if you have a patch. If you're not addressing that patch at that particular time, you might as well take neon spray paint and put a. A circle on it, because that's where the kids are going to graze. If there's a hole, they're going to dig it deeper. And I know when you guys, I understand when you put sand down, it's, you know. But that just means it's some other place within the day. So we, I think even Ellen and I talked years ago about maybe even having a sod form or, or a way, if a place gets bad, let's. Let's replace it. You know, before it grows and gets, and gets bigger. And I, I don't need you to solve this for me today, but I, I want you to help us get. Come up with a plan so we're not here today. And it's not just regular maintenance, but if, whether we're in season and there's, there's a bad spot or whatever, like, how do we just address that? You know?
The issue is, Mr. Banks, is there, there's not a break in play.
Sure.
So, so if I lay down sod, it's not tacked down, it's not rooted down. So the concern for player safety would be is that, that sod's going to get torn up. I've talked to multiple sod growers uh, in the professional world of sports, uh, they have sod that has mats on it that's laid immediately after games.
So we're saying when you lay the sod down, there's, it's going to be clay on it. So.
Yeah, there's going to be practice literally that afternoon on. So that's the stuff that Freddie and I've talked about. That's the stuff we've talked about with L. We've talked about with Jim. We've talked about with Glenn when he was here. So multiple people, we, we're trying to encourage the rotation of the fields. I would welcome. Uh, anytime if anyone wants to go out there and walk with me, I can show you use air specifically on.
No, I know what you're talking about. I'm.
I'm talking about, so you, north sides of the fields, edges of the field where we could rotate practice. One of the thoughts is to take an aerial shot of the field and maybe give it to some of the soccer associations and say, hey, for this particular day.
We have a drone, so there's no reason why we can't get L to.
We're doing drone photos as well to kind of document that, but say, hey, th- this day on Tuesday at five o'clock, you, you can only practice on this, this particular spot of the field, not at the gold mouth continually, so.
Why can't we rope it off?
Yeah, that, that seems like a solution.
Yeah, why can't we just rope it off?
Well, the other part, Mr. Tinkle, that I was going to talk about is, is last year, I specifically requested because of the amount of, of saw that was, was, you know, essentially overplayed. Shut it down. So our goal every year is to have zero saw replacement once the season's done. So again, supplemental aeration, supplemental nutrient applications. And we've really had minimal saw replacement over the last three years. So we're able to kind of, you know, grow it back in, get some stolons and runners. So we, I specifically requested that we close the gates on the outside. People were literally jumping over the fence.
Oh, so that they.
To go inside. In the play, yeah. We took all the goals off the field, uh, which, you know, Jim had that done. And people were still going out there.
Marble art works.
Yeah, so there, I know, I know there's some fencing that I think you all own that we were considering putting up caution tape. Yeah, we, Manscape is going to make some signs and we'll put it on there. I don't know if we want to use the, the district's logo. Or if we want to use Manscape's logo to use our eight oh number to call in for some.
Use the sheriff's logo.
The sheriff's logo, yeah. We thought skull and crossbones maybe with the term, so.
And, and I, my concern with this, the fields are probably the worst I've seen them in, in a long time. A couple, like, five or six years ago, they got really bad.
Yep.
And then, but we're, we're at a point now where they're.
Do you know the current hours that are on the field?
Um, I could probably calculate it for you because I, I mean, I'm out there. I've got four boys. I've been out of those fields for the past twenty years.
Daughter's played in the soccer league and my wife let me hear it every time we come there on a Saturday, right? But. So you have recommendations for athletic field use, right? So anything that's two hundred or less is going to have sustainable.
But you have to calculate, you know, type of use, age of use. I mean, there's. We can, we can go through that calculation, buddy, because most of the use out there is probably under, uh, under ten years old.
Yep. We had a flag football season this year too, it, right, in, in addition. But anything for U F field capacity. Anything over eight hundred hours, you can expect significant turf loss and player injury.
Yeah.
Uh, from what I understand, Laura, I don't know if, if you'd like for me to share that, but from what I understand, it's over two thousand hours.
Easily.
Oh, good lord.
It's over two thousand hours.
You can't do that.
So there's not much of a break, right? So what, what I'd like to encourage is, is just, can we take two weeks in the fall? Can we take two weeks in the spring and just completely?
Because the, the seasons don't, they don't go back to back. Now, the only one that might be the exception is Flag because they had a, that new season, but. Normally, there's about a month or two in between seasons.
And it's usually in December, right? So it's not actively.
There's, there's two seasons during the year, so it happens summer.
Yep.
Uh, so you have a, you know, so we don't have to get into all this. Maybe you and I can just connect online. Uh, just go down rabbit hole, but.
It, it seems like it starts again in September and then goes right back again till May, right?
And then August.
Okay, anyway, I didn't mean to go down a rabbit hole here, but, okay.
It's, it's a good conversation.
So we've got, um, we have this item. It's the request to move the twenty K. I've seen a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
The next one is, so uh, Chelsea, this is the. Um, the item that we needed to address.
That we're tabling.
With our manual first before we can bring it through.
Oh, G, yeah. We skipped F.
G, that's where I'm at.
Oh, yeah, we skipped, we're tabling F.
Oh, tabling G?
F.
Yes, we're tabling F. Yeah, so I just went ahead and said.
That's the she shall.
Yeah. Okay, more information to come on that.
She sells she shells.
Yeah.
So yeah, I brought this forward, um, because the, the uh. Agreement with Chelsea is outside the parameters of our current handbook, and I just need to know how the board would like me to handle this, since she is the board's employee and not our employee.
So part of our kind of contract negotiation, um, in order to, to get that through in a timely manner, um. We negotiated with Chelsea that we would address this and really the request is for. Um. What, what is the?
I need to know if we're going to separate out level one and level two managers, because currently we have uh, two hundred and eighty hours of P T O for, it would be basically Kenny, Leslie and myself and Chelsea. Uh, she was offered three hundred and twenty hours of P T O. So I do have the ability to split it out between level one and level two managers, or I just bump all managers up to three hundred and twenty. That's what I need direction from the board. How you would like to handle that?
My personal opinion is that there probably should be levels. Um, now who falls within what level?
I definitely agree there should be levels.
So. Um.
What, 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 how many people are in the, uh, level one is?
But we don't have, we don't have level one and level, I mean, it says exempt level one and level two managers, but our current structure doesn't. Doesn't uh, discern who is level one and who is level two.
To me, there should be three levels. Should be level one, level two, level three, and we just need to determine what roles fall within level ones, levels twos, level threes.
Yeah, right now we just have two and everybody falls under the same.
Manning table with the uh, people and then try to determine.
Well, the only people that, the only, right now, the only positions that fall under that are Kenny, Leslie, myself and Chelsea. Because it was Chris, it was the four of us before.
Okay.
So it's basically anybody who's salaried.
So we'd have one person in level one, four people in level two. And everybody else at level three.
There is a little three.
So how do, how are they, how are they handled?
It's hourly, that's completely different.
Oh, they're hourly, okay.
Tony, does the board address staff's P T O or just my P T O?
I, I think to address yours, they would need to modify the manuals.
Okay.
Um, and. Sounds like the easiest way of doing this and being done with it.
I'm sorry?
That sounds like the easiest way of doing this and just be done with it.
Uh, yes.
We knew that when we made the decision to do it.
Okay, the, the real drama here is we have to update the manual. I think the question that we have on the table is, we need to address. Let's call it, as it sits right now, well, with level one, which directly relates to Chelsea. Um. And then let Chelsea manage the other levels as she sees fit with, with staff.
And come to us with the recommendation?
Yeah, but I mean, honestly, I think we.
I don't, I don't have a.
I, I, I mean, honestly, we give, well, we probably still would have to have the board's approval.
Yeah, I.
For any changes to, to P T O or to the.
To the manual.
For the manual.
Just have her do that.
Yeah.
Let her assign to come back to us with proposed changes.
Yes, yeah, just make the recommendation.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, yeah.
Especially when it ties in because she has her new organizational chart, that she's the first one to allocate where they go. So, yeah.
Okay, then I need, I need guidance on the second item. Uh, because she had P T O scheduled before she came in, and the handbook currently states that new employees cannot use any P T O for the first ninety days that they're here.
Yeah, I just think we, we just waive that.
I, I think the board has authority to waive that.
For love, I would say for level.
Asking for guidance.
Yeah, for level, yes.
We do, we should do it.
I, I think I would put that in there to give us the flexibility that we don't get trapped in this again.
To waive it.
To waive it.
Yeah.
As appropriate.
Yeah.
Pretty extended rate circumstances. So you're not.
I don't think we're good there. Um, moving to four H, capital project sidewalk repair. What needs to happen here?
Um, this is a little outside of our approval limits. There, uh, we have in the budget this year, part of the capital repairs is for sidewalk and maintenance and replacement. We do have, um, I sent you guys this proposal that has the, the maps. I'll get to it. Basically, it's Gateway and Griffin. Um, these are all the areas down Gateway Boulevard that need replacing. One side.
Bids on this work?
We, this is the bid, so.
I mean, are we getting comparative bids?
Uh.
Are we just going to one vendor and getting a price?
This was the lowest price of the two that, I'll talk to someone else too. I don't remember who it was, but this was the lowest of the two.
And we were building out in internal capability for this, but we don't have.
This is too much, and this is asphalt.
Yeah.
So we do concrete.
Mr. Tinkle, this is an exact reason why we'd love to have a contracts manager.
Well, this, this is another, this is another thing where this is one of those.
Is that three point?
Yeah.
This is one of the items where this falls under a, an, an account that the board has already approved us to spend these funds for this reason.
Is there?
Yes, the funding is there. I said they, the total, um, it would be. Here for sidewalk repairs, there'd be sixty seven thousand dollars left, and then the, or sorry, curb and gutter replacement. Um, this is what would be left.
Alright, so we're just, budget there, we might, we're just, it's coming from some different areas.
Can I make a recommendation? Please move forward with this. From my experience, concrete pricing and asphalt pricing are going up monthly.
Yes.
So, and, and any liabilities that are out there with sidewalk and trip and falls, we need to address them immediately.
I make the motion to approve the uh, recommendations.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, any additional discussion? Uh, call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, four I, pond bank repair ranking discussion. Is this, this is just.
Got to come back from.
That's gonna.
So we've already had that, so that's, okay, so that.
We're waiting on them to come back to it so that we can approve that.
So our two consent agenda.
Uh, any items to pull consent agenda five, A, B, or C? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Show move.
Second?
Okay, alright, I was looking for my notes. We got here too quick.
Well, that's first. There's something you got.
It looks like Joe, it looks like Joe Biden going through.
I know, I know, I know.
Ring foot. Hey, we don't use that kind of name calling.
No, I'm okay. I didn't make any notes, we're okay.
Okay, uh, so I have a motion, I'll second, uh, call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nope.
Great. So future board business, remember, uh, make sure President's Council, June twenty second, that is at.
Denny Grimes.
Denny Grimes.
We're going Denny's there. Um, and then we've got our tentative leadership workshop. Chelsea, this is what we were talking about on the, the twenty seventh.
Yes.
That will be at Gateway.
Well, club.
Um, again, I would just start filtering topics.